Second.
All right, from Congress meeting to order this morning, would you have a form? You have to say very person I said, first, you pray and I'll lead us to the place.
Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us to be here in your presence in this room. Pray, Lord, that all the business is going to be taken care of, all the conversations and all the relationships that are going on, Lord, will be pleasing to our Father and you. We all know that and we trust that your will is being done, anything is written. I pray for a word of encouragement from you to the leaders, part of the leaders, as they lead this county in the business. We pray this in the precious and beautiful light of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, y'all. John Middlebly.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the republic which is standing in the nation under God, in the universal, in the righteous and just as well.
Republic of Canada. My little ghost, you can tell it's woman. Barbara reports, familiar, is she here?
Yes.
In the citizen.
Good morning. For the eleventh of July, the senior senator served one thousand five hundred and fifty-eight meals to homebound clients and hundred and two meals to our congregate clients, for a total of one thousand six hundred and sixty total for the night.
That's it?
That's it. That's good. Our new fridge will be delivered tomorrow.
Your what?
New fridge will be delivered tomorrow.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Extension office, Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Carrie Frager, report as far.
After vagrations, the county funds ended in ten million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, seven sixty-six ninety. And that's with an interest earned of thirty-five thousand, four eighty-two fifty. That's earning interest on the taxable money hacket account at a rate of four point three one percent. And currently, the, the rest of the funds, we are at four point oh eight. And currently have eighty-three point four nine percent of our funds sitting in that taxable account so that we can gain that extra interest. And that's all we have.
Thank you. Kenny Archer, results.
Uh, yes, the commissioner should have received the invoice filed recently, let me know if you have any questions on the bills. And also have an additional bill, which is our INS, our jail payment, uh, that's due, uh, for fifty-five thousand. Uh, that wasn't in the still list, if you don't need to look at that, let me know. And then we're nearing the end of our year, we're about right because we've, we've got in a hundred fifteen percent of our revenue and we have spent ninety-two percent of our expenses, so.
Should be about, on your budget sheet, about point eight-five percent is where we should be, if you're right. You'll have to look, see what's over there. As of August anyway, with this month on September.
Yeah, so just turn in your bills, please, as soon as you can.
Any questions from the lobby? And law enforcement, Joe Dixon.
Yes, sir. Uh, law enforcement to answer to their ninety-seven calls for the month of July. Uh, we currently have eleven inmates housed in Jones County. Uh, we'll be transporting one inmate to Middleton unit over in Abilene today. Uh, his final destination will be Cagins and down Houston. And I do have three others that are waiting, uh, beds for TDC. It's all good for now. Oh, uh, and I did, I know it's not only agenda, but just who thought I'd like to explore getting a contract for keeping the lot behind the law enforcement facility. Get it mowed and then maybe the continuing meth slums, it's not quite meth slums. Just something to think about and I'll have it on next month.
Matt, that's all I have, if I'm concerned again, I'll entertain a motion. Dispositing motion.
I'll say.
All right, seconded, all in favor? Motion, Harry. New business. I want to knock out for a bit ahead here. Ricky, I know you're busy.
Okay.
It's the last thing on the agenda, so you don't have to sit through all this.
It's got mine.
Of your time, you'll go ahead and then we'll discuss it when you get in.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you, Judge. Uh, may I please the court? Thank you for having me, I'm gonna step in here, sorry. Like this. Yeah, I'm not used to being on that side. Uh, and so I, I was gonna do my budget request, I know it was a couple of weeks ago and I was stuck in Mitchell County and then had to get here, which I already done by the time I got here, uh, done. So I apologize, uh, for being on there and, and then not presenting my budget. Uh, but I do have some budget requests. Um, currently, we have three offices, uh, Nolan, Mitchell and Fisher County office. Usually Fisher County office remains empty unless we're working here. But Mitchell County office, where my office manager, Mary Ann Douglas, handles all the cases that are flown from Fisher County into Mitchell County. She has an assistant, Judy Martinez, that handles the intakes and calls and paperwork as well. Uh, and then Nolan County, Angelica Collier, her handles office manager there and she has an assistant that handles the cases as they come in. Um, and so I'll tell you, when a case comes in, like I'll just have a basic case, uh, when it comes in, there might be ten videos. Uh, my assistants, uh, they, and the office manager divide the caseload up half and half. Uh, currently across the counties, we have a thirty to forty percent increase in cases, uh, in all three counties, even Fisher County, uh, as the, the crime has increased across the state and nation. Uh, and so it's been an increase in cases, and so when the cases come in, they have to upload the videos, um, to our system database, put the case in, and then they give it out to me and the ADA, I have one prosecutor in my office. Uh, that process, even on a simple case, will take about three hours for one case to be put in with the amount of digital evidence that we have nowadays. Because you have dash cam, body cam, you have front dash, back dash, you have body cam footage, any officers responding to the scene, the state of Texas, and the defense attorneys, and the discovery rules require us to get every body cam of every officer on the scene, supplements, things like that. So you can imagine the amount of data coming in, just that alone, my office manager and my assistant stay quite busy, just doing that. When we have court dates, they have the cases on the plea dockets. We have about the waivers nowadays, they just plea a case, run about fifteen to twenty pages deep. Uh, and so you might have eighteen cases on a docket, they have it nine and nine if they're pleading, uh, going to court, answer phones, all kinds of things that the office does. And so currently, uh, my office man, my office assistant in Nolan County is funded out of Mitchell County. Mitchell County assistant is not funded out of any counties, uh, that is paid directly out of the forfeiture account, which is slowly dwindling down with the retirement of Ronnie Stiltner and Billy Sides, if y'all don't know them. They're responsible for ninety-five percent of what was in that forfeiture account and they are gone. They retired.
What's, what's in there?
Right now in Mitchell County, there's about, less than about a million, about a million in there currently. Um, and that, that's Mitchell County. Nolan has their own, Fisher County, we just got a seizure, that was the first seizure I've ever seen in Fisher County. Uh, I mean, the, the bank account, I don't, I was just talking to Becky about that. Mark never had a seizure out of Fisher County. Each county, we were seized in the money in, we put it in a seizure account. Fisher County's never had seizures in my time as DA. In Anne's time as DA, she actually, uh, didn't have any money in an account at any point. Uh, so Mitchell County was our major one because that's where Ronnie and Billy set up at for many years. Uh, it was upwards of four to five million. In the last few years, it went downward in two or three year span. Because I do have my interdiction officers currently paid out of that. Uh, and so that, that issue's slowly dwindling down until we're able to build that back up. I don't know what else to do other than ask the counties to fund these positions that are needed. Uh, and so that, those positions, uh, I'm asking for Fisher County to pay their percentage of those two admin assistant positions. Uh, that would come out to about a fifteen thousand dollar salary. Uh, a budget increase, which would be seven, seven each, uh, for each assistant, uh, plus, uh, whatever their percentage is to the benefits that are paid for those individuals. Um, additionally, the, uh, second budget request I have is, uh, every county surrounding our counties has increased their budget for assistant district attorneys. Uh, Taylor County upped every one of their ADA salaries thirty thousand across the board. Currently, a newly licensed prosecutor with no experience prosecuting misdemeanors makes, would make more in Taylor County than they would here in my county prosecuting felonies. Scarry County pays their ADA more, Big Springs pays their ADA more, Tom Green, Coleman, Crown, he pays all their ADAs more than all my ADAs, or my ADA. And so it's become an issue in the sense of retaining prosecutors. These are individuals with doctor degrees, uh, professionals, and the recruitment of these individuals have become very difficult on prosecutors' offices across the board. Uh, and so I'm asking for an increase of her salary, uh, it, it, I think I was asking for about a fifteen thousand dollar increase over the three counties. That breakdown would have been fifty-two percent in Nolan. I think it goes down to like thirty-two in Mitchell and it might be the rest is in Fisher County. So Fisher County would fund the, the smaller portion of that amount, uh, but that would be an increase I'm asking for, uh, for her salary bump up to get her to a point to where it's a, a recruitment issue, or even if she were to leave, to be able to recruit a prosecutor to this, to our office.
Do you know what that number is gonna be roughly?
I don't know the rough number, I can get that to y'all. I do know, when I did it to Mitchell County, this is what I told Mitchell County, and I thought Mitchell County is really receptive to paying their portion of assistants and the ADA. I don't know my third request, but I'll tell you Nolan County's probably gonna say no across the board. I don't want y'all, this is the problem I've always had with budgets with my district, is I have counties bouncing off of each other. And so every time I go to one county, it's like if the other one does it not, and so I'm just asking for Fisher to pay their portion. Uh, if, if, uh, one of the other counties doesn't, then I would approach that at the next budget meeting and tell all these other counties to pay their portion. Um, currently, I have, uh, a plan to have more drug interdiction people come to Fisher County, especially in Rotan area, uh, as we are getting information that all the counties are pushing out to Fisher County. Um, and so we're, I'm having, I have a new assistant or a part-time interdictor, Braden Bill, who actually lives in Fisher County, who's gonna plan on being more visible in Fisher County as well. Uh, but he's paid out of our forfeiture account in Mitchell County. I don't have that number, but that would be an increase just to bump Michaela, who's my current ADA, that salary up to a portion where it's competitive with the surrounding counties. These are the requests, I would say, that first one, the assistants and the ADA. My third request is, uh, currently with what I have to handle outside of my job duties as far as prosecuting, and honestly, that's what I'm good at, I love to be in the courtroom, I do not like being in front of y'all. No offense, I don't like politicking, asking for budgets. My strength is being in a courtroom setting and arguing prosecuted cases, that's what I do, uh, and I don't plan to stop that. Um, but with my caseload, with budgets, uh, office management, the amount of meetings I have with law enforcement officials across the state, uh, i- it's becoming increasingly hard for me to focus on the major cases as, as they come in. Currently have two co-cases, one in Fisher County, one in Mitchell County, that me and Bo Brown, the co-case ranger, work after hours on together, um, that I would like to devote more time to. I just don't because currently I'm supposed to be in court right now at nine o'clock in Nolan County and they're holding those dockets for me until I get back. Uh, and then I set, I'm gonna set on aggravated sexual assault in Nolan County, I'm prosecuting tomorrow. So those timing frames of me are hard to do. So I am asking for a, an assistant district attorney, a third, or a second one, to help with those caseload. Uh, we have an increase of over thirty, forty percent. Uh, the indictments, the caseload, the dockets are, I mean, they're way busier than I've ever seen it. Uh, in my time, uh, Anne and Mark's time, probably nowhere near touch the amount of cases we're dealing with. So that salary would be currently just sixty thousand across the three counties with benefits, so it would be just the portion that Fisher County's owed to pay. So I would say I don't know if the other counties are gonna do that, so if they weren't gonna fund that, then that would be a wash for Fisher County because I want to be able to hire one without all three counties funding that spot, so. Any questions y'all have on me?
If you will, get us a note, we won't adopt the budget till next month.
Yeah, I could get y'all numbers on.
You get us a number, you get through howdy to Becky, so that we have something to act on for next month.
Yeah.
And we know what we're agreeing to.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get you the salary numbers and then I'll get it to Becky and she could shoot me the percentage.
That's like fourteen.
Yeah, or y'all can shoot me the number of, uh, taxes and.
Yeah.
Reimbursement fees, so I could do that, so. Alright, do you have any other questions for me?
On the percentages on the second, second request.
Uh huh.
You said thirty-two percent for Mitchell, fifty around Nolan.
Yeah, I'm kinda going off memory, Mike, uh, yeah, I think, I'm for sure fifty-two percent is paid by Nolan County.
The total being fifteen thousand off of.
Yes, all three counties.
Lucky roughly about twenty-seven hundred on that one.
Yeah.
For us.
It's the smallest amount.
Fifteen thousand on the first one, because you're asking seven additional of both.
Yes.
Both, so.
Yeah, that'll be two, two employees.
You're seventeen, seven there. Minus whatever the last request is.
Yes, yeah. And so, yeah, the smallest portion is based on population size.
I think it's thirteen point something.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact, yeah, it's close to there, so. I do know it's about fifty-two to Nolan County, except just recently did that budget, about, I think fifty-two point eight or something.
So it'd be a little less than twenty-seven.
Yeah, so. And that's the salary base, there is reimbursement, I know fees for taxes and insurance that there's a percentage there that's given that'd be a little bit more, but, so.
How much of an increase are we really seeing on cases throughout the counties right now?
About thirty percent across the board, I mean, I.
Even here in Fisher.
Even there in Fisher County, and that's with turnover and, I mean, I would say Fisher County out of every county I have has the least amount of, and has police officers on the street, uh, currently. Um, and that's no offense to the sheriff or anybody, it's just the staffing issues. Um, because Sweetwater has their own police department, uh, their sheriff's office, you got Roscoe PD. Um, Mitchell County has, you know, Colorado City PD, Mitchell County Sheriff's Office, and then Fisher County only has FCSO. And I don't see many DPS troopers here as often anymore. I know Corey Maldon's now a CV trooper, he used to hang out over here quite often, but he's now in Mitchell County. Uh, and then the seizure, the one in Rotan, was Fisher County responding, uh, that big drug thing in Rotan, but that was also DPS coming to help too. Um, my, my hoping is to have my newest part-time guy come over here quite more frequently. He'll be more willing to come and sit and then having both my guys come over here more frequently. Because the amount of cash and drug seize from the case in Rotan, that's a lot for a local dealer to have that amount of cash on him for just a local. We don't usually see that unless it's the highway going back to the cartel. So that was a lot of money for a local truck.
I don't hear anything.
Yeah, they seized about twenty-six thousand cash off somebody and DPS did in Rotan. And about one, I think it was, uh, one ounce of, that had in this, it's a lot to me, apparently.
Forgive me for my ignorance, but what is that money that you seize, what does that go to your, what can it go to?
So.
Under your control.
It is current, it's in a interest-bearing savings account till we have a civil forfeiture hearing, and then it goes to the court. And once awarded, it's awarded to the DA, but then I have a operating agreement with a seizing agency. So with, since it's DPS, seventy percent of that goes to DPS and then thirty percent goes into a forfeiture account. If it's Fisher County SO seizing money, then it's seventy percent would go to Fisher County's, uh, forfeiture account and thirty percent goes to my forfeiture account, and I could spend that on law enforcement purposes. I can't do salaries, uh, upon the commissioner's approval, court's approval, and I do do that out of Mitchell and Nolan, but I would say that's why our accounts are getting drained so fast over in Nolan, Mitchell, is because I'm having to pay salaries out of it. And so it's getting down really quick, so. But it is for law enforcement purposes that, that can be done on. Throughout the years, we've actually given, I would say, any amount that was in the sheriff's forfeiture account in the last twenty years was given from the DA's forfeiture account. Like we used to give money out when it was a lot bigger, we used to get money, pay for trainings, uh, pay for equipment, things like that. And we've done that for a few years. It's gone, yeah. Yeah, we haven't had money to give in a long time since Ronnie Berry did. So I'm having to be very careful what I do with that, given the amounts are going down so fast, so.
Any other questions for?
Any questions I have? Thank y'all so much, thanks Judge for doing that. Give me a may excuse.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all, if you have any questions, I'll email that to you back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, new business, conflict of interest, the law, then?
No conflict of interest deals, Judge.
I do remember.
Yes, I do have budget amendments. I have three, actually. The first one I have is for, uh, precinct one. Um, he's needing repairs on his John Bear grader, and I attached that bill to the budget amendment. I guess you guys got that right. Okay, that's the first one I have, which is thirty, thirty thousand. Uh, the next one is a budget amendment from the sheriff's office, because they're short. And back in, uh, May of twenty twenty-four, the court approved for cologic contract. You won't pay that out of his budget, and that, that kinda happened in twenty twenty-four, but it rolled into twenty twenty-five. So I'm asking for that to be amended. Um, let's see what it up. You know, hold on. Uh, I believe it was a fifty thousand dollars to Min Mountain. For the cologic. Yeah, that's what they approved, yes, last year, but it didn't roll into this year, until this year. What kind of making short. And then on the Adda County housing, um, in the LSC, obviously, uh, we budgeted forty and we spent a hundred and seventeen, so that's about seventy-eight.
We changed that to this one.
I believe we did with that one, make sure. But those are the three amendments that we have. We're not short in our overall budget, but it's just easier to amend those lineups than it is to me to try to move money from all the other departments that are over. Makes it cleaner.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Dispositing, exclamation. I'll say it.
I'll say it.
The motion is taking a whole favor. We're gonna flush it, carried. Item number four, burn van, Gilwood, what's your dump currently off? Leaving it off, do we need to reinstate?
I'm okay with leaving it off, no any problems. Yet.
We haven't had any yet, if we have one, we may have to have a special, special meeting with the grand state.
Yeah, our duty doesn't take long to dry it out.
We've got some rain chances this week, say we leave it off and if it doesn't happen, we start having some problems from calls fishing noon. Green slip.
We'll do that, nothing necessary in that, just a reminder, if y'all ever put it on, I can take it off, but I cannot put it off that. No action on the burn van. Item number five, special resume interview with Maldon.
I have none, Judge.
Item number six, discussing approved condition of court rules and procedure in compliance with House Bill fifteen twenty-two. Everybody familiar with that? We just have to have three days now, working days before we can post an agenda, so we need to move that back to Tuesday. But we were doing it on Thursday.
I like motion to approve, a second.
Motion second, all in favor. And then, so, carried. Item number seven, discussing approved, up any commissioner's court or general request for, I think y'all heard that, the same, when you change our cutoff to Tuesday, is that right, Joe?
I'm sorry?
Tuesday, Mary, is that one cutoff?
Tuesday, and that is what we're gonna have to do for the cutoffs, so we can get it, I just.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
A motion second, all in favor. You have, carried. Item number eight, approving order of election constitutional amendments on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Actually, I'm here.
Your orders. Just get them to the primary.
Okay. Any questions on that, Joe? No, no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I like motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Posey, all in favor. We now listen, or she carries. All right, item number nine, approving publication of proposed increase of salary, I think, in the proposed budget be five percent.
Out of print across the Giver News.
So any discussion on that? If no discussion.
What are you talking about, the, approving the five percent, or can you not raise that up? Is that for the? Is that for the budget?
Yes, sir. We have to have to do that today, so that we do have a newspaper.
Yeah, I have to be covered.
I don't see no reason we can't at least give them seven percent this year, we got the money to do it.
We got the money, but let me make a suggestion, just so that everybody understands, the cat office gave the first percent. Uh, the cog, which are among the legislative committee for nine full channels, gave the first percent. Nolan County gave the first percent, Michigan County gave them five percent, and I suggest five percent, I don't know why we're gonna give seven percent.
Well, because their salaries are a lot more than everybody's in this county, that's why your cat office, they're a lot more than what everybody needs. That's why I say we, we're way behind in pay scale, way behind. That's why I say, say at least seven percent, come on, man, this.
We're way behind the what, though?
I mean, we're way behind on salaries. We're way behind on salaries from.
Are we way behind bigger counties with the higher budget, or are we way behind?
Any county, we're way behind. We're way behind.
You have proof before we're behind on county hard salaries?
I ain't gonna go there, but I, I didn't get any proof, but I just, I'm sure I can get it through to you. You've got proof across the road, what they make. So a three percent on their salary is pretty good, it's kinda like your salary, three percent of your salary compared to three percent of our salary is a big difference.
No, it's not, three percent is three percent, I don't need to pay on those stuff, if that's where you're going.
Yeah, we don't even get paid when we should get paid, and I'm asking for a raise for the commissioners to get brought up to what it should be on, like the rest of elected officials too, so let's get that out of the way.
Any discussion on that?
Our salary is way behind the other commissioners, because I did do some checking on that, but no, I didn't print it off, so. You need to buy and look and see if public records.
And I look closer to us, because I've got the guys that work, that I've been through school with, we're actually ahead of them on what we are on salary. We're not behind everybody, and that's why I was asking where the numbers were coming from and where we're behind everybody. You gotta kinda come back to where our income for our county, where we're at too, not just throwing out, well, we're behind.
We got a pretty good income in this county, we put lots of money.
We're starting to get a, get income, but we get it enough back in, we need to start looking at bringing some other stuff back.
We've got lots of more income coming, our down the pipe too, just not here yet. Not a guarantee, but it's pretty, it's pretty much, yeah, it's coming.
And we've got a lot of income that's leaving before too long. So we've gotta be careful with what we do within that. I'm not opposed to raising people's salary, but most government entities don't get more than a three, three percent pay increase for annual cost of living. Five percent is actually a very good pay increase, especially across the board. If we were to do something, I, I say to me more, the employees need it more than the elected official need it, honestly.
Well, you don't have to take it.
So. But I mean, the biggest thing is, let's put the money where we can get the people in, because if we don't have the right employees.
You're exactly right.
We're not gonna get it done.
You don't pay them, they're not gonna stay. We've already had that problem in our precinct.
I know everything was set where it is, Judge, on the five percent across the board.
Now, that's on the proposed, y'all can say.
I, I know it, it's proposed. But can we see about the five percent for the elected and the seven and a half for employees, or what?
Yes.
You say what's coming in?
I'd have to redo the numbers to change that.
So you're saying three ten for.
Right now, you increase the five for.
Leave this at five, the only thing that's to change would be the employees, then it's seven and a half.
I ain't going for that.
I ain't going for a seven and a half either.
I didn't ask for seven, I said seven.
Now, I think it's more than that.
The biggest reason is I'm asking is, you've been here twenty, thirty years, you have to work for it to get retirement enough to even live. By that time, you're dirty dead, so I guess you can make it. We don't pay nobody enough money, and we have the money, but y'all wanna just hide it and say, oh, we ain't got it. We got it.
Did you run those numbers?
I can tell you, if, if you did it across the board, it ended up the budget number sixty thousand more dollars, if you went across the board seven percent. On top of what you already got in there, it had another sixty.
I wanna say it on paper.
Do you want the three and the five to my?
Do you still?
Yeah, I'd like to see it all.
Do you still have that, that sheet that I gave you on your court last time?
Judge, I'm not going off of, everybody does this without seeing the facts on it. We're not here for. We're not here for speculation.
I, I hope this stays, somebody answer please.
I, I don't know what you're talking about, but I didn't have.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go reprint that, so you can see the seven percent.
She's talking about their funding.
The midworm one?
Yes.
Do you have that, I'll just.
I don't have it.
Okay, I'll go reprint.
While she's in there, let's move on to the, uh, the, the proposed budget, which is just something y'all have to go, it's just an exercise in that, it's proposed, we won't be filed till next month. We come back to the salary, and y'all, we'd like to approve that.
Somebody in the, what's wrong?
Just looking down at number ten for the proposed budget.
So if we approved a proposed budget, can you change, can you go back and change the wages?
Yes, we do this every single year. Proposed budget is proposed budget, file budget's not, it has no meaning.
I just asked a question.
Was there anything in the proposed budget that anybody had any issues with? Because everybody's got to see what the proposed budget was for the sheriff's department. Was there issues within me?
I have an issue. Um, I know it's my private, we're sticking out on, um, it stands. The judge has told Brad I'm not being able to be paid for inquiries for magistrations. That is brought with that in store. That is for personal use of my vehicles. Everything I do, I use my own personal vehicle for. Whether that's signing warrants, whether that's going to meetings, um, whatever. It is not for inquiries for magistrations. And I'm asking that it be put back in.
And I only answered that, you can pay her for travel, but you cannot give her a stipend. And you all have a summary there. From Greg Abbott County, may not pay justice of fixed amounts over and above justice salary for conducting inquiries and serving as much.
Nolan County pays, Mitchell County pays, Jones County pays.
Well, if we can't do the, the stipend, looking to travel, what would you need on the travel?
I'm asking the forty-three thousand to be left in there.
For travel?
A lot of travel.
So, let's see, let's take the.
So if we just take the word stopping now?
Well, my suggestion is how much travel is involved? I would say you do a travel sheet, you reimburse accordingly to your travels. And I have two thousand for travel, I took mine out also, just to be fair. But you can fill in a request when you do travel for mileage, since it's a personal vehicle, can be reimbursed, reimbursed at each incident, so if there's ten a year, twelve a year, or five a year, you're paying for it. But that's the decision y'all need to make. And again, that's proposed budget, y'all can be set up, it's final, that's the thing that has to be done today.
How would you be about us bringing it down to where it actually is? Because up to date, you're twenty-five, thirty-eight, thirty-six into what your travel stipend is.
Oh, that's, no, that's not right. That's prorated.
What's prorated?
That's three thousand prorated.
Okay.
So that's not a correct metric number.
That's the African number on it, yeah.
Yeah, three thousand, she, she's, she's been getting three thousand for the last four years.
No, I get that, but we're, what's the actual number being spent?
The number's not in there. There's no such number in there. That's the reason I'm suggesting.
It, it's just a hundred percent busted in without showing any.
Three thousand is what it shows.
She, she gives three thousand.
He's asking what the actual travel.
I get that.
Oh.
I'm, I'm giving.
I don't know it, because before, I don't know how many years ago, Angie probably knows, before they were going, making her turn in sheets, and then y'all approved, the court approved for her to have the three thousand. And it was up there, and she got a travel. She didn't get raises on that travel, but she had a three thousand budget. And that's what she got.
You can put whatever number, you just can't remove that into a salary as a supplement.
It just needs to be traveled, if it was there, correct?
Yeah, but how are you gonna, you're correct. I get what you're saying, but how are you gonna pay travel? Otherwise, it wasn't in your salary.
Can you not, can you not put it in as three thousand is travel, but to be pulled out of as sheets are turned in?
As needed, that's all I'm saying. You don't even have to put a number there. Just a reimbursement for your travel.
So how, you just work that as travel will be reimbursed?
Well, if you put three thousand in travel, then you, she can turn it in as she travels to do reimbursement. Depending on the salary stuff, it's earned.
Earned.
That's, that's just paying all kinds of. This one's, it's just cut off like it said. I'm there, sorry.
Y'all, if you're, I don't want to put on any more of that crap.
So like, like with ours, like, and then she, she just brought us, and it says, our travel stipend is zero.
Yeah, we move that back up into your salary.
Okay.
That was last court.
Well, it is. Yes.
I'd say we don't, we don't take it away as far as that, we just don't have it down as a stipend, and we just turn it in for reimbursement for travels.
Are you gonna do that on the three thousand as monthly, or you go under, turn it in to where she travels, be reimbursed?
My question, if she turns in for the travel to be reimbursed, then she's reimbursed for travel, so she's not out any expense on what's going on. And then we're within mandate, because we're not stopping on there that the governor's saying we can't put on there.
That is correct, I'm just saying it's illegal to put it in as a stipend.
Well, actually, all you gotta do is take the stipend off of it and just leave the money in there, and it saves all the paperwork and all the bullshit.
But how are you gonna pay that?
Yeah, we haven't figured it out yet. We've been doing it for the last four years, for me.
I understand that, I'm just saying, if you put it in there and put it on your payroll, that is a stipend, you cannot do that.
So you have to call it a stipend if you do it, Deli.
That's exactly right, it's incorporated in payroll.
Got you.
I'm not telling you guys what to do, the easiest way to do it is leave the three thousand in her budget, she can turn it in wherever she travels. Turn it in report, we send it in to Vicky's office, that will be approved with each commissioner's court agenda. Only amounts you travel. Some months you probably have more, some months you probably don't have any.
Nolan County listed as a, um, vehicle allowance.
How's that paid? Do you know, is it paid in the salary? You can't do that.
I think that, I think Mitchell County does it as you turn it in, but I think Nolan County does have it up on the salary. Is my understanding.
But that's the only, that's all I'm saying.
That's for only the justice of the peace?
Yes, sir. I have two thousand in mind, I took it out because I don't, to be fair.
And I come out more on the mileage factor than it said on sister mile.
That's what I'm saying, that's legal, that's my whole point. So all she has to do every month, wherever she travels, turn it into the court, go then, get your bills, and then it's processed. Separate check, not a supplement.
So how do we do the extension office? Do we bring him a separate check for his expense?
Doesn't, I don't know how that's done to them, but it doesn't, that part doesn't matter.
It's because of justice.
Yep.
Got you.
Anyway, here again, that comes into the file budget, that's not where we're at. Things we have to do today is decide on the salaries. If it has to turn into a newspaper, you have to adopt that.
Now, we have to, the reason the salary testing is, we have to put it in paper, also the voter approval rate, or the, the right to put on the, in the paper or on the website, just by government code, we got to do that. So that's why we're having to deal with this.
And I'm gonna ask one more time, so we don't get confused, are we on the salaries, or we on the proposed budget?
Be back on salary. So total payroll costs, is this correct on the last third?
Human error, thanks.
Every time. So five percent, that's a hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and one increase on expense for five percent payroll increase. At seven percent, that's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-two. Correct?
Yeah.
Six percent was a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four.
That's correct.
Something to keep in mind, guys, I'm only one vote, but I have to speak my piece. You got probably sixty percent of the county on social security, you got a two and a half percent wage, they pay your salary, they're asking you for seven percent. I don't think that's very powerful. That's my opinion.
I'm pretty sure the windmills, the old counties and all, they're paying that too.
Seven percent?
Not just the, not just us, I mean, I think taxi just like anybody is, because I also gotta live too, you know? Everybody's gotta live. It's pretty bad when you can work for the county and still get on welfare. Basically what it is.
I think spending money before we know we have it a hundred percent in is not, is not the best decision.
I agree, a hundred percent.
It didn't, didn't, I mean, it's like, in farming wise, that'd be like putting a bunch of fertilizer out, which you have to, but then you have a break year, and that's not good.
Sorry, I looked on the one debate one, actually, three or four.
It was three or four, yeah.
They lived last year, I don't want to use quote, and say we have this here. Especially this year.
Eight hundred?
Yeah.
Pretty tough though.
With Court Ronoff, this court question?
Yes, the Court would.
Sixty thousand is the difference?
Right.
Yep.
That's the number, huh?
It's the biggest Iowa man, our four hundred and forty-nine. Million dollars extended in, my side audit, out of things.
Say it again.
No, well, I come over here, the outside auditor, and say, yeah, four and nine. Put back, put back in the journal one last year. That's what you're talking about. I don't, I don't see how. The report, that, that is there, but, uh, it's one in the general fund. I know they've been talking about a ten percent. And what we've done, with the opinion here is a five.
Well, there's two ways to look at it, and I'm not telling you which way to go. There's cost of living rates, which is not ten percent. You can always come back in your budget process, if you wanna take your salaries up to something y'all agree on, you can do that. But cost of living raise is a cost of living raise. You know, you give a ten percent or even a seven percent cost of living, if you wanna adjust the salaries accordingly. And then have some kind of index, whether it's social security, with whatever the national average is, of the cost of living. But you're, you're confusing the situation if you call a ten percent, call it a like seven percent.
So seven, the seven percent is the cost of living rate?
That's the way it's on here, you can't bonus or anything in government. If you wanna adjust the salaries at some point, you can do that.
So that's what we need to do then, adjust the salaries, and you can give a five percent raise.
You hardly can adjust salaries, you can give them no raise, I'm just saying, cost of living is a cost of living.
And that's what we discussed in, in changing the, the salaries, what everybody means.
Also, the longevity can be changed and give a, a percent raise, and then that way, the longer you're here, the more money you get. And when somebody new comes in, they don't make what somebody that's been here twenty years makes.
And that's the biggest issue there, is the turnaround up here.
Let me keep this in mind, and, and going, want to look here, the salaries. If you do that, when the mayor comes in, regardless how long you've been here, that's.
Makes the same money.
Makes the same money.
Yeah, the longevity.
Well, it wouldn't be much, because our salaries ain't nothing. That's why, you know, when we raise the commissioner's salary, maybe we'll get some good commissioners in here. Maybe we'll all be gone.
We've increased every year. The reason we're here is for a lot of years, there was no increase up here. I'm sorry, I wasn't in office when all that was going on.
There was no increase, I'm glad you realize that. That's what I'm trying to do, is get it up.
But over the last twelve years, there hasn't been an increase through here.
Very, not in the commissioner's salary. Maybe a little two or three percent raises, all we've had, and our raises ain't all based on what, our stipend was always in there, we'd get raises on the stipend, so we was always getting a raise on that. When I started here, my salary was twenty-one thousand. Today, it's thirty-one. Then we get to ten percent, ten thousand, you can't count that. We never got a raise on that other ten thousand. That's for vehicle.
Like this year's forty-three.
But I know you took it out and moved it up like I asked you to do, and I appreciate you doing that.
Well, that gives you percentage increase on going forward.
It'll help, yeah. But I wrote one that makes more than we do.
If you wouldn't file this year, and you got solar money and tax money and the bitcoin coming in next year, you could go up another five next year, that's ten percent in two years, that's pretty good.
Well, that's what we've done.
But I watched it, so.
The last four, you could, no, it's not.
You might could go up more next year, then two years, you could probably go up to, I don't know. Doesn't know much that bitcoin thing works.
And those are numbers we don't have yet.
But the bitcoin's not up and running yet.
Forty-three thousand's what the commissioner's salary is, forty-three, eight-two-fourths.
They like, if we got some money in the cost of living, seven percent.
Cost of living is not seven percent.
We need to adjust the salaries, and then we can give them five percent. That's the way to do it.
Cost of living is about two and a half, twenty-two and a half percent, exactly two point seven five.
I don't know where you shot for groceries, but it ain't where I did. Two and a half percent. Our damn cost of living has went up way more than two and a half percent in the last two or three years. If you go to the grocery store, you'll see that real quick. Everything's moving, few, everything's moving, then you just gross, just, fuck everything.
If we need to put money towards anything, it really needs to go to a lot more infrastructure within this county, more for the whole taxpayers are paying in for. Is my opinion. Anybody else?
We need to adjust the salaries, if we can't give more than five percent. These people gotta live just like everybody else, you know? It's tough out there. We've got the income coming in, we've got plenty of income coming in. It's not gonna put us in the red, it's not gonna hurt us, you know?
We've got the income.
We're good shape high.
With stuff, over the last few years. If we start getting ridiculous on our spending, because we can't uphold the budget, then there is no income. And it's not just what's going on this year, it's over the next few years. We could go all this this year, and then come back next year and get hit hard, and then everything we've done this year, you've got to undo next year. It's not a one, two-year scenario, it's what's gonna happen in the next three years within the county.
Well, you don't, I have no idea what's gonna happen tomorrow.
Nope.
You know?
Well, that's why I like what we were saying, what you're going off of.
If I live my life based on what's gonna happen next week, I don't know what I'd do. All I'm saying is, we're starving everybody to death in this courthouse, and if y'all can't see that, I'm sorry. But I can see it. I live it. My county paycheck don't go nowhere. At all, I mean, it's just, we're behind. And I want to be able to whatever other elected official makes in this courthouse, other than the sheriff and the judge. I'm not asking for what they get. I want my salary to go up. I would like to retire from here, but I can't retire from here on chicken feed money. I mean, for twenty years, I can retire on a thousand dollars a month, maybe. That's, that is my problem, is the retirement is not any good. We don't need to add to the retirement, we need to do something, so people can retire, and they won't stay here forty years. Let somebody else do it.
Anybody else?
I wanna say something. I didn't take this job for the money, I took this job to help out the community, and what's best for the community. And I think that if five percent is good for the community this year, then that's what we're gonna do this year. That's how I feel. Next year, we can do ten, and maybe in two years, we can do, do ten, I don't know. Whenever the money gets here, then we'll do it, but if the money's not here, I don't suggest that we do.
The money is here.
Or, not all of it. We've, the big money, the bit, the bitcoin, all that stuff, that's not here yet. And that is not a guarantee, nothing's a guarantee, like you said.
No, it's not. Twenty years ago, we was right around two million dollars, and now, we're at ten? Tell me it's not getting better?
It's getting better, that's good.
Yeah, it's getting, keep getting better, it's gonna keep getting better.
Mr. Allright, you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd say seven, but five, no way it worked in the past. You got this, that Paul was dealing on three? This on a five, he goes in on five.
Five's in the proposal.
So the longevity, Becky, do, do we have to decide that today?
Uh, it would be good if we did, yes.
Do you have a single?
Yes, I propose, this different longevity, and it'd be a twenty-two thousand dollar.
Honestly, moving forward, everybody wants to do the salaries like you were talking about a while ago, but I know any other government, especially federal job I've been in, you didn't have a high salary. You had a, and Pat knows this, Sheriff knows this, you had a set salary, and your longevity is where you got that increase. And what that does is, for the taxpayer, that funds every bit of everything that goes on up here, doesn't get hammered when a new person takes over the position of the person that was there for twenty years that wanted to retire. They didn't, that person had a sixty thousand dollar salary, that it took them twenty years to build up to, or a seventy thousand dollar salary. Didn't, the new person didn't get a seventy thousand dollar salary with zero experience. They went back to the base salary and had to earn their way up. So I would be more up for longevity. That gives people a reason to come up here and stay up here, to add to their shell.
That's fine with me too, let's do the longevity.
I agree with that. So, that's why, I'm at five percent on this, and if we're gonna do any major increase, it goes on the longevity.
I'm good with that.
You give people a reason to be here, to stay here. We've raised it, it's year four last, then, last year, I thought.
On fifty?
No, definitely, no.
No, we raised it one year.
This is the, no, we didn't, we stayed the same, because we're on the same page. Because it doesn't change until year ten, and it stays the same as it is, but year ten, you get a big, a jump, and then twenty, and then it caps out at twenty-five. I think that's only fair, when somebody retires at twenty, person don't come in and make what she's been twenty years, she's been twenty years. And then when they retire.
I'm gonna go with that. As long as everybody's been here long enough, get some more, and then when I'm gone, somebody don't start out with what I was getting.
So it doesn't bump up until you've been here, really ten, but?
So where's it gonna start at, at ten?
Uh, I think it was three thousand?
Three thousand. And that's lower than what you're asking for on the other.
So what is it at twenty?
Ten.
Ten thousand?
I mean, eight, eight.
That ten, I'll vote for the ten.
That, that's.
Ten's a twenty. Said before, that's a four thousand dollar.
But it caps at twenty-five, so if you didn't hear twenty-five, you're.
It caps at ten thousand, at twenty-five years.
It should be a cap.
Eight thousand, uh, twenty years.
Five thousand at fifteen, and three thousand at ten, and it's still the same as right now. You stuck at the hundred fifty every year you've been here, till you're here ten years, which those are milestones for people to work.
I'm part of that.
I agree.
Is that on the agenda? We can do that during the budget workshop.
You can do that, you can do that, yes. Put that on the workshop, you can. Because it doesn't go to bed for months. All we have to do, beyond the thing, we're gonna increase the salary, hand the tax rate. So if we do that, are you okay with the five percent?
Okay with the five percent, but uh, we need to figure out what, where y'all figure out with the JP.
That's.
Because that's basically like cutting somebody's paycheck.
I understand that, let's don't get ahead of ourselves.
I'm not trying to get ahead of ourselves, I'm gonna make sure it's done in a manner of times where it's not too late.
I'm telling you, that's on item number ten, we're on item number nine.
Got you.
All right.
Longevity's a separate, and.
Yeah, we're, it's not on there, so well. It's not on.
But this is, this is just the publish, I get it.
Right, on item number twelve.
Yeah, the one, Jerry didn't have to, so we can do it the next meeting.
Can I make a motion to approve the five percent publications, on the five percent salary increase?
Have a motion of a second from this proposer, calling favor. You now, it's looking carried. Item number ten, approve, propose budget. Here again.
This is what we're talking about.
So the biggest thing on the travel stuff, that's the issue right now, is the fact that the governor's saying for magistrate, I'm just trying to get this straight. Uh, the county may not pay a justice of the peace amounts over, or above the justice's salary for conducting inquest and serving as a magistrate.
There you go. That's what that says, but that's not what she's saying, it's not for the, it's not for doing the magistrate, it's for her vehicle expense.
But if we can't legally put it on there, because it's considered a stipend, is that why we have to do it the other way? Turn it in your mind, you'd be. That's what I'm asking. It's not about taking the money away, let's make it legal on what we're doing, that's our job. And if it's at seventy-nine cents on it, it's probably gonna be higher than what she's being stipended right now, to begin with.
Or you could adjust her, her payroll instead of doing the forty-nine, nine thirty-four, add three thousand dollars to it.
You can do that, but you're only carrying worms, you're paying an electrician some more than you do.
Okay, if they share, when you do an increase, it'll get an increase in the volume.
What's your thoughts on it, Dexter?
I don't, I don't think my vote did. And you're wrong there, here, you're all the idea. Well, we probably never really kept up with it, though. We didn't have to keep up, that's why they changed it, so you didn't have to turn in a collective check.
That's the deal, you're not turning it in now, but if it goes to that, just start turning in the paperwork. But if it makes it legal, I know it's a pain, but the whole point is, we are the government, we're supposed to set the example of what we're doing, so if they're telling us we have to do it that way, then we've got to let the paperwork, right? Another one, you can do that next month, yes. Hold it up, but.
So this doesn't have to go on this one, this month, just.
Yep, for discussion, you go on your permit, we just need to approve the proposed budget. And all that is, is an exercise, if the budget's been filed, it changes nothing, you already changed, gonna change the longevity, so that, that's the youth proposal. I just made a motion, approved, let's be silent, that's all there is.
I make the motion to approve the budget, and we study this, and have it on next month.
Oh, really? If the motion is accepted, they have a motion to approve by time, sir?
The way we studied.
All fair. Dexter, you have your gun. Later, motion carried. All right, item number eleven, approve, propose tax rate, Becky, if you'd like to.
Sure. This is kind of weird, but the non-revenue rate, um, is where we don't go up on taxes, and it brings the same amount of money as last year. Um, but this year, the voter, there's a voter approval rate, is actually lower than our non-revenue rate. So if we went with a non-revenue rate, we would have to have a hearing, a public hearing, to approve that. So I suggest that we go with the voter approval rate. Um, that way, we don't have to have a hearing, and that's the minimum, we can go up on taxes. And that doesn't have, we're not really going up on taxes, but that's the numbers we got from the appraisal district.
And that number, point five five four three five nine, is in the proposed budget?
Yes, that's the number we clicked in.
Can you explain how the non-revenue?
First time in history for me.
We don't know, I mean, I, I would have to talk to Bruce about it, but it, it does happen. Um, for some reason, you know, the state keeps us within so much precision, we can't go up. And they have the, the rates where we go, but if we went to the non-revenue.
Because we've done the non-revenue last two years prior.
I think part of it's in there, I think part of it is on the appraisals.
It has to be in the price values. So normally, that, that second non-revenue rate would be lower than the voter approval rate, and that's what we usually go with, because that doesn't increase the taxes. But this year, the voter approval rate is actually lower than the non-revenue rate. So since that is lower, we'd have to have a hearing, a public hearing, if we went with the non-revenue.
I'm making a motion to approve the voter fru, uh, frugal rate at point. Five five four three five nine.
I'll say.
Take it my little crimpin' all the favor, you nervous, scared. All right, y'all want a break, or you wanna knock this budget workshop out?
I could use a break.
Take a little five more each. Do you want?
Do you mind? We have that one, Jerry. I'll pick those copies leaving here. I'm waiting for anything else. Yeah, I'll find it.
Now, if I had to...
Correct, we all back? Item number twelve, complete workshop. It is the first one y'all want to make a motion to approve the longevity.
So, we can start with longevity.
That's probably me, just...
So just to understand this, right, Becky, on your longevity. Starts at ten years, correct?
Well, you get longevity once you did here four years.
But, I mean, you really start seeing the bump at ten years.
Yeah, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five is the bump.
So, ten years is three. Fifteen's five, right?
Yes.
Then, uh, twenty years is eight?
Yes.
And twenty-five years is maxed at ten, capped at ten, correct?
Yes.
But longevity pay does start at four years?
Yes, it stays the same up until you get to year ten.
What is it at the four-year mark at the ten?
It is a hundred fifty wherever you've been here. And so I, uh, on year six, you get nine hundred and seven, a thousand fifty-nine, thirteen fifty.
Twenty years, I can get that.
I think it starts at four, which is six hundred.
It hasn't changed much, do it, but...
Really until ten, until you've been here ten.
Just with the ones, just with the ones where longevity is right now, it's twenty-four thousand. Figured, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. It would raise it to forty-six, six?
So it'd raise it twenty, what? Twenty-two thousand, six hundred?
Twenty-two, six hundred.
Yo, Gordon, Dexter, what's all the...
I'll make a motion to approve it. I'm good with getting them changed either way. You good with it, Dexter?
I have a motion.
I'll, I'll certainly motion on the approval for the longevity, this proposed longevity pay, what we discussed.
I'm looking for everything, all in favor. You now can take it through. So what is it that y'all learned from that one you... From Louis, I can...
What? Sorry, everything.
And Louis is talking from... For Angie first.
Can we take, can we take the travel, her travel out completely and add the three thousand to her salary?
You can, and it's gonna be basically the same thing.
It's the same thing, you can do...
You'll just choose to get a raise on it, more than whenever.
Here's, here's my objection to that. Then she is higher paid than the elected, put it somewhere. I think you're open to that, or...
Before you open that, because they're all higher paid than us.
No, she'll be three thousand above the elected. It's new.
Is there any way to make it to where it's not a stipend, but the money stays to where it is, stays where it can be used for the purpose of the travel without a ton of additional paperwork?
Just turn any paperwork to where you went. It's, that's the simplest way. Then it's not a stipend. And if it's more, it's more. It's less, it's less. And then come choose with what raise you, just call them stuff.
How does Nolan County do it? The, the second way we're doing it, or drip with them?
I think cyber still does it that way.
Mitchell's going to what we're talking about as far as the travel deal, and they're saying... Becky said that she thinks Nolan County has done it the way we've been doing it.
But it's called travel allowance. Vehicle allowance.
Yeah, something like that. Like, both counties do it two different ways. I think Mitchell County makes them turn them in, and then the other county puts it under travel allowance.
That's the simplest way.
That's what?
The simplest way.
Travel allowance.
Yeah, because more for five thousand years, five thousand a year. You gotta turn in paperwork next. You just can't add it to her salary.
What if you just take the vehicle allowance? So I said it there. We just take it to vehicle allowance? Because that's what you're saying right now, if it's in fact, you're, if we just put it as vehicle allowance.
But how are you gonna pay that? That's my question. If you put it in her salary, then it becomes a stipend.
So you only have two choices, basically, right? You either put it in travel, she has to turn it in, or you give her a three thousand back in her salary. That's only two choices.
You can't give it back in salary. That's my point. You can put water in her bank, you want in there. She just got to show a paperwork to reimburse you, so... If you put three thousand there, she turned it into paperwork and her five thousand will be... End the water process of being the budget. That's the only legal way to do it.
I don't understand how the bigger counties are getting by with doing, doing it, though.
I don't understand, but like you said, we're not going to the general.
Yeah, we can't get a table that and find out?
Do what?
We can't get a table that and find out? Yeah, we can, no. It's gotta be, if you're gonna put it in salary, you gotta do it now, with the gun. Well, yeah.
No, you can't do it.
So you can't table either that for her salary and... Or, I can't say it's a big paper.
Just be a travel allowance, you're turning the paperwork.
Yeah, you're immersed with it. It's way pretty much, you know. It's pretty much whatever's been the matter.
Yeah.
It just can't be converted in the salary.
How would she do that, sir? She's like going out on like a death call, for example? It's her personal vehicle. How, and she may not hit gas that night, she's going out on death call. How, how would she do that to the receipt?
Your mileage. You just brought up mileage.
Just straight out mileage, but she'd be able to turn in just the mileage and no receipt. Not have to back it up with the fuel.
Yeah, but it'd be like going to school or something like that. You're not, you're not just proving what you paid on gas. It's your mileage you're putting home, that you're getting.
You don't have to turn in the gas receipt.
What if you did like a, like in referee, they have a circle? And then if you go off this many miles, you get paid for this many, this much. If you go that much further out of that circle, you get paid that much more, and so forth and so on.
Well, if we go by the hours, we go by the hours mileage, you know, we go by. So she just has to turn in those for that.
Does it start at the courthouse? The mileage starts at the courthouse?
No, the mileage would start wherever she lives.
Wherever she's at.
So if she was in Dallas and had to drive here, the mileage would start. Because it would be where she got the call, where she's responding from, to where she ends up. With mileage. So that's what I'm saying, it could be more than the, the three thousand on, the mileage. It's just the hassle of turning in the paperwork.
Or you could furnish her a car. Either way. Three thousand sounds pretty cheap, don't it? Twenty-five cent.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I'm not opposed to this. How do we risk that it's legal to do?
I mean, if Nolan County's doing it, I mean, Nolan County does, then other counties do it. But I mean, we've been doing it. We're still here. I don't know.
We've got a proposed, we can turn in for paper on the approval, what we approved.
Yeah, I mean, I'll still be...
So we can, we can come around to this next month.
As long as you're not gonna put it in her salary.
What my suggestion on this is, we table this and get the county attorney to tell us what we can do legally.
That'll be fine, and you don't have to table it, because it's in discussion.
Yeah, it's not a kind of budget.
Yeah. That would be my suggestion, I know, is we ask Morgan and get her to look to make sure we are doing proper on what we're paying her for.
Anything else?
Yeah, one more thing. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I didn't get nobody to vote on that?
Yeah.
Damn, I'll start a wonder pet show. At least I can get one motion approved.